Well, we thank you for the beauty of this day and the beauty of the season. Thank you for the opportunity to be together in a civil discussion and work on the citizens' business. We ask you to guide us in making decisions that affect the county. Thank you for all the many blessings in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion if the agenda is approved. All in favor? Are there any corrections to the minutes of the 9/8 work session meeting, September 9th regular meeting, September 21st special call meeting, or the September 28th special call meetings?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a move to approve this request.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sandy, would you give us our financial statement, please?
This is the financial report for September 30th. Each department should be at seventy-five percent of their expenditure budget used. Departments over budgetized of September 30th are Clerk of Superior Court at seventy-seven percent, Sheriff's Office at seventy-seven percent, and EMA at eighty-one percent. Overall, we are at seventy-two percent of the total revenue budget received and sixty-seven percent of the total expenditure budget used. Total revenue received to date, twenty million, three thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Total expenditures to date, eighteen million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Any questions? And discussion of the possible action of the American Rescue Plan Act. I wanted to ask, we have Gary McPhee and Mike Gibbs here from the Water Authority. Would y'all kind of summarize for us what the proposal is that we discussed the other day?
What we're proposing is to run a new water line. You guys remember the CDVG that we were working on that we just completed. Where that ended on Round Top Road, we're looking about running a new water line from that point all the way down Round Top Road to the Gilmore Pickens County line. And, you know, give the citizens in that area an opportunity to get on public water. I was telling Chairman Patterson during our meeting the other day that probably nine out of ten calls I get requesting public water is in that area because of the quality of the wells in that area. I think they're high in iron and ag and these, that type of thing. And what we talked about doing, if we could do this, is treat it like it was the CDVG project where the monies would actually pay for the meter, water meters to be set for those citizens in that area and even tie it between the meter and the house as well. Just treat it just like it was the CDVG project. And you're looking at about five and a half miles of pot farm in order to improve the project. This project also would provide fire protection in the area all the way to the county line.
And cost on that will be roughly one million dollars?
About one million dollars, yes.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Great idea. I believe you said the impact fee would be reduced also?
Well, that's a board decision. The board, in spite of the chairman, the board would make a special, kind of like they've done in the past, and reduce the impact fee, you know, to where it wouldn't be on the citizens.
Now, this would come from the second payment that we would be getting.
Which would be after the first of the year.
Right, after the first of the year.
But they could go ahead and do the plan.
They could, yeah, go ahead and do that. And what I would suggest would be that we go ahead by resolution and approve this to actually reserve that money ahead of time.
You made that as a formal motion.
That's a formal motion. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Discussion on possible action of group health insurance rates. The tough thing on this one for me is we have basically two proposals. One, that would give us the same benefits that we have right now. And the other one would give us the same benefits with the exception that rather than Delta Dental, the dental coverage would then be folded in with Anthem along with all of our other coverage. That will, that particular plan would save us, I believe, it's a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And that's hard to, that's hard to ignore. On the other hand, as near as we can tell, almost none of the dentists in LJ, except Anthem. So unless you happen to be associated with the one that does, you'd have to change your dentist and perhaps even if there's not taking any patients on the other one, might even have to go outside of Gilmore County to find a dentist. To me, that's kind of serious and it's a very undesirable thing. On the other hand, there's a hundred and seven thousand dollars. But I got to tell you, this is a tough one for me. In the end, I favor staying with Delta Dental, but I believe that the only actual reasonable choice for the people of Gilmore County would be to fold again with Anthem and save the hundred and seven thousand. So I'll throw that out for discussion.
Employees are terribly important to the county. We haven't been able to play the well. Hopefully, we can improve that. I hate to cause a problem. I'm a fiscal conservative, a hundred and seven thousand is a lot of money, but I'm a little concerned about what it does to our employee population.
Well, let me tell you, I would be very easy, easily convinced to go with the Delta Dental.
Which is the plan we have now?
Yes.
So are you ready for a motion to stay with the plan we have now?
I am.
I just made it.
Okay, I'll second him. Is there any further discussion?
No, I'm happy to stay there because that also keeps our dentists with.
We have, they would keep our dentists with.
Dentists in work and having work. And I hate for our employees to have to travel so far when they're trying to miss as little work as possible going to a dentist. Overall, I'm happy to stay with the Delta Dental.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion, possible action of extending county maintenance on that over to the Corps of Engineers property. After looking at all the yays and nays on that and the situation that we have, I am going to make a motion that we extend county maintenance to the Corps of Engineers property and not beyond it.
I'm going to second that because I think that's the responsible thing to do out there. Our Director of Roads has told us several times, and I think that's the right thing to do as well.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Brings us to our zonings. First one is for Jeff Watkins from A-1 Agricultural to R-1 Residential Low Density. This is to build short-term rentals utilizing the annual splits. I will go ahead and make a motion on that, and my motion would be that this would be denied.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Melvin and Kim land from A-1 to R-1 Residential Low Density. As I recall, I believe this is the one where they wanted to make a split and give their granddaughter a couple acres, and I would be okay with that. I would make a motion and we approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On Adams four and five, Karen did get an email saying that they would like this to be remanded back. I always skip that one. I don't like that one, I guess, I don't know. Okay. Frankly, Allison, I'm just anxious to get to remanding something. From A-1 Agricultural to A-1 Agricultural with conditional use, this is for a wedding venue. And given the location, I personally would be okay with it.
A hundred, with a hundred people mass.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
So that's in your motion?
Well, I haven't made a motion yet.
That's all right.
I will, I will make a motion that that be approved contingent on all of the conditions set by the planning board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, four and five, I did get an email saying that they would like to have this remanded back, so I would make a motion that this be remanded back to a planning board.
Which one is that?
That is the, from R-1 Residential to R-4, multi-family medium density, right at Yukon Road.
That's for the gentleman. Yeah, that's what we're doing for. What would it be remanded back? I mean, what's the contingency?
They would like to conduct a traffic study, or have one conducted before.
That would be the expense of the developer that wants to do all of this cluster?
That's correct.
And they realize that the four-way stop is a part of each LJ and has to do nothing to do with the traffic study coming up to the four-way stop?
I don't know what they realize. But, and I don't see a traffic study that includes a four-way stop as being a general traffic study.
I got to get to it, Corbin. That says you can't even make it to the four-way stop from where this starts at with that housing that they want to do.
And I'm sorry, first, we need you to go to the podium, but second, we're starting to get back into a public hearing. They're going to remand it back for the traffic study, and the planning commission will hold another public hearing in which you'll be able to participate. And once that traffic study is available or viewable ahead, Karen, can you raise your hand? If you'll just reach out to her by telephone?
Yeah, I'll go through the floor.
Okay. She'll be happy to provide you with a copy of it. If you can go ahead and exchange emails, maybe tomorrow, sometime next week, just let her know, and she'll be happy to give you a copy of that before that public hearing, okay?
A copy of the traffic study?
Yes.
And that will be done before the November meeting?
It'll be done before the public hearing. It may take, it may take a little bit more time because of the advertisement requirements and things, but you'll be provided with a copy of it because it'll be, it'll be subject to the open record. And you can use it and look at that prior to the public hearing and then participate in the public hearing that the planning commission will hold, okay?
Essentially, this is going to start it all over again.
Yeah, it's what was agreed, we were supposed to put a stop to its name.
But before you do leave, if I, you may provide your name to the clerk so she, so she can record it in a minute, so you can.
I can do that. My name is Doodle Pierce, P-E-A-R-C-E. I'm the president of Rich Haven Homeowners.
Thank you.
May I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am, would you please come to the podium?
My name's Lynn Penny Lane, Rich Haven Trail. And I'm on the board of Rich Haven Homeowners Association also. One of the things where we had the planning commission hearing, next to Rich Haven Trail, there was a cliff, a big cliff, a very tall big cliff. It often falls down as well as that.
Ma'am, ma'am, again, they can't hear this information, the ordinance and the law provides.
But things, they say that they would have an engineering study done as well.
That was part of the contingency.
That was part of the contingency. And they're going to have that as well as.
Yes, they'll be doing that as well, but.
The engineering study?
Yes.
Okay.
We just asked that you say those arguments for that public hearing and that, that meeting.
Well, I already said traffic study, and I'm more concerned about cliff falling into my backyard than having the Rich Haven Homeowners stop set.
And that was my fault. I was incomplete in what I said.
We're covered, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have a study being done that we should know about?
What was there a condition on yet?
No short-term rentals.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
You've got a motion. I'll second.
Did I make the motion?
You didn't. And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Remanding.
Of to remanding. For both.
Aye.
Okay, and the final one is for Marvin and Gail Patterson, A-1 Agricultural to P-1 Public Institute, to carve out 1.73 acres, I believe it was, for a family cemetery. I would make a motion that that be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Citizens wishing to speak, and I almost skipped it, but I did not. Anybody that would like to speak on any topic, then just come to the podium.
Any other?
Any, well, almost any topic. Now, I'm going to ask, we're not going to start this, this meeting. We probably will at some point, but we, we have a lot of enthusiastic folks here lately that can easily speak for thirty and forty minutes. So, okay, I'm just speaking about plans for the future here now. Very likely, at some point, we'll put like a ten-minute, fifteen-minute time limit on We will put some time limit on it, but we're not going to do that tonight. We just ask you to be brief, please.
John Oliver, Grup Hill Road, National Resident. So, I'm reparted, and I'm a little irritable, might be because I'm hungry, but I just sat down and watched you give free water hookups to people because their water filters couldn't filter out the iron in the water.
How long you been here?
I'd like to know where I applied to get a rebate on the water filters that I paid for quarterly to get the iron out of my water at my house. Because you're, not only do I have to pay for the iron to be filtered out of the water, another can be filtered out of my well, you're taking some of my tax money and giving it to somebody else and giving them free city water.
I can't argue that point in the extreme, but you do realize that this is federal money now and not Gilmore County money.
There's no such thing as federal money.
And that's why I said I can't argue it in the extreme.
It's not free, comes with a tax.
And that's why I said I can't argue it in the extreme.
And now you're on the books, you report to Big Brother now, just like the little blindsided action that one of our post commissioners too is trying to make by bringing in University of Georgia to tell us, let's do a study and we'll get apartments and we'll get free government money when we do apartments. A different subject, I didn't come to talk about that tonight. Every time you go to the government tee, you pay, and you pay dearly. I have a question about the second thing you talked about. No, that was a different one. So, tonight, while I'm sitting back here tired, because I'm an old man and I shouldn't be working, but I am, and you gave yourselves a raise.
Didn't give us a raise.
Every year, my health insurance rates go up. And you just decided that because you didn't want to be inconvenienced to go find a new dentist, you would spend an extra one hundred and seven thousand dollars of county money.
I believe.
I don't appreciate that at all.
I believe the issue was whether or not we wanted to allow local dental coverage for the county employees as opposed to making them have to leave the county to get dental.
I respect you so very much, you're a great politician. I said what I said. The question that I did have was that, because I try to, I try to follow the patterns of the voting, and sometimes it confuses me, but you approved the, it looked like it might have been action number three, you approved something that was conditional, and so you just say conditional. So these conditions, they're in writing, coming through the board, the planning board, and so when you say a or yea or nay, it's in writing. I mean, we don't, we don't hear conditions sitting down here, but it's already been discussed, and so when you're given the stamp of approval, all these conditions are in writing and the developer or whoever, the owner, homeowner, has to abide by conditions A, B, C, D? Okay. I was, I was concerned because it's not in writing here, but you have it writing in your system.
It will be in, it will be in writing in the referendum that our county attorney will, will create. When we approve or deny something here, then we get a referendum for everybody to sign on that, and it has all of the stipulations that.
Resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry. It has all of the stipulations in there that we have, and so when we get that, it will specify in writing those three conditions.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think we do need clarification. The insurance cost in the county is going up as everyone's cost is going up, even to the situation we have.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Staff, Constituents, my name is Tom Wathell, I live at 76 of Berwick, Rhode Island, I'm proud to say that, I'm going to give my address out. Without discussing something, counsel, counsel to the chair, if it's remanded back to planning and zoning, the Yukon, items four and five, does that not start processing us all over again?
There will be a new advertisement, there'll be a new public hearing, and there'll be a new opportunity for the planning commission to consider whether to approve or to deny the application, and then that'll float back up to the Board of Commissioners.
So, counsel, did I make a argument then, since it started all over again and notice is going to be out that they would not be privative preparing anything regarding that because they can't take action on something that's being remanded down?
It's being remanded down, and if you wish to talk about it, it's going to potentially open this board up to us a lawsuit. So if you wanted to cost the taxpayers that, then Tom, by all means, go ahead and proceed.
I'm trying to figure out.
I would hope that you wouldn't, though.
Wouldn't, sir.
Cost the taxpayers that potential risk.
No, sir, but, sir, I have to tell you, it's important because we're in dialogue with the chair. You know, yesterday, I think there should be a procedure that if there's an objection to a public speaker, if we're going to be strict on the rules on how the public speaks, we should probably be strict on the rules on how it's done with your parliamentarian. I think if there's an objection to a speaker, it should go through a point of order from either, or the chairman can shut down the speaker, or one of the commissioners can do a point of order, he shouldn't be talking about this and maybe discuss it with counsel, but counsel shutting down speakers, I think, I've been speaking for thirty years.
Tom, I didn't shut, I didn't shut you down. I said if you wish to risk in, step into that agreement, you were welcome to, I just didn't think it would be a wise decision.
Mr. Chair, do I have a question?
Yes.
Okay. I, I appreciate it. He's a great county attorney, he's probably the best in the business. I think the problem we have is, is that every county in this state has different rules on how you proceed. Now, Supreme Court has ruled, y'all have to let us speak. I think we know that, but I know, you know, the commission, they want to hear everything from everybody, they want to hear, and hear what we have to say. And for the most part, and up until about the past month and a half, this governing body has been laissez-faire. They, y'all really are close with the community, but I think shutting down public speakers for somebody that's not a commissioner, now, now, he is your representative, he's your parliamentarian, I get it, and he gives you advice, but it should go through the chair.
I agree, and I will be the one doing that going forward.
Yes, sir. I, I'm not taking on the counsel, through the chair, I'm not taking on the cameras. I, I, I think.
I see your point.
I think we're getting a little too technical because if it goes back down, and it's not unnoticed yet, but it's going to be unnoticed, but notice, I don't get noticed when I go to the website, I see the agenda, and, you know, the buyer and the seller, and their attorney could have been here because it's on the website, I look at that as a conspicuous place, it's, you know, it's not noticed.
And I don't believe that, though, is recognized as satisfying the requirements of advertising so that anybody who's for or against knows to be here at this meeting to make their arguments.
Yes, sir.
And that's, I think that's the problem. I've even thought about, you know, going ahead and making that advertisement so people would say what they wanted to say here, but I'm not really sure that, you know, we want to really get that deep in the weeds with it. Also, I would bet actual money that you will be at that planning board meeting to make those comments.
The reason I think the board, the county commissioners, the board commissioners should hear public arguments again is because sometimes there's one of y'all that's planning his own commission, sometimes there's two of y'all, and, and because there's a gap in the dates between the planning and zoning and the board of commissioners, sometimes data changes to where y'all may not be aware that something has occurred out there with that property, but a citizen may know it and they can't come up and tell you.
Let me mention, though, that there is one other alternative.
Yes, sir.
A, a well-known and popular individual could urge people to write emails to their commissioners. And I have a separate folder in my email, I just, I read them and I send them to their folder.
I have no idea who you're talking with.
No, I'm not saying anybody, I'm just saying someone in that position might, might do that.
Yes, sir.
And let me tell you, the commissioners get the idea pretty quick that way, and as far as I know, that strictly is legitimate.
Well, I appreciate when everybody on the desk goes, you two, counsel. Well, I appreciate what everybody on the desk does, you too, counsel, thank you, I didn't mean to pick on you just a little bit, but, you know, you're, you're, you're used to it, but, anyway, God bless, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to also make it clear that you know that all of us have a recording, that we get the chance to listen to a recording. All of us have heard the entire meeting.
Yes, ma'am, and, and, I hope y'all do listen to it, I.
Absolutely do listen.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner Edward Phillips. My comments are both late, but I just, I still wanted to say something. When you were discussing the proven charts readings, I was going to see that kind of discussion, deciding between one and the other, I really want to let you know, you made the right decision. If you're trying to go with it, it ain't cheaper, it ain't the things that your employees are trying to make us write, plus what's going to happen later, you know, they're going to jack their rates up once they got your vote, you know, so that's something else consider, I would stay with what you've got, once you decide to, and kudos for that decision.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Kimberly Reckless. A number of years ago, a joint comprehensive plan was developed, there was called then the Catalyst Group, which kind of morphed into several other groups, you know, my, in my research, part of that study was done in what was Georgia, no research, that one in GRC, the same group that's being used, I understand, during this moratorium on subdivision period that we're observing. Part of that research done at the time by the, that commission, involved asking questions or a survey of Gilmore County residents, this title, Gilmore County Joint Comprehensive Plan 2020 through 2024, page ninety. This is a question asked, again, of locals, residents. Gilmore County should continue to grow, even if it means a loss of agricultural lands. I'm here five point four percent, agreed that should take place.
I'm sorry, what was the presentation you gave?
Five point four percent, say, sure, let's grow, regardless of what it costs us in agricultural lands. Agricultural land should be protected as a community grows, and astounding, not surprising, eighty-three point four percent share that mindset. One, question number ten, what do you consider the greatest threat to your community? Wasn't methamphetamine, it wasn't burglary, it was uncontrolled growth to, that could destroy our small town and state views. Fifty-nine point one percent of the residents here in Gilmore County share that view. I'm going to assume, and I'll think I'm going out in a limb here by saying so, that if we did, when this study is done once again, and we get, we paid for the study once again, that same sentiment is going to come back as being relatively the same percentage of concern among the people we have concerned here in Gilmore County. And looking at, looking through the joint comprehensive plan that was created through that same steering committee, some points were taken, some goals, some policy was adopted. Goal number five of the joint comprehensive plan for Gilmore County, Eljay, East Eljay, City of Eljay. Goal number five, policy seven point two, promote future residential development that is compatible with the physical limitations of the land and the established land use in that area. Why are we having a discussion about Yukon Road ad nauseam? Can we, what, can we cram in there, can we widen it, can we bring water out there? We've done the study, we adopted the policy, we set the goal, why are we having to come and have these discussions over and over and over? Going into your economic development land use, LU one, promote development of our existing unfinished subdivisions prior to the development of new subdivisions, prior to. Why are we having discussions about townhomes, apartments, new subdivisions on an ongoing basis when our existing study results state that we are supposed to be finishing our unfinished subdivisions prior to development of new subdivisions? The Community Work Program, page on page twenty-four, land use says, want to strengthen subdivision regulations dealing first with final plaque and competition, and impose a moratorium on new subdivisions until existing subdivisions are built out. That responsible party are local government and our planning and zoning department. What are we going to do with this new study, and when it comes back and tells us the exact same thing all over again? Are we going to produce another joint comprehensive plan for 2020 through 2024 that says the exact same things, and we're going to not abide by them again? And when I say we, I mean you all, we're here fighting every day, I'd rather not come to these meetings and hold you all accountable. It's your job, it's your duty and responsibility as elected officials to abide by the comprehensive plan we paid for, to abide by the rules that are in place, and to listen to the will of the people.
Woo-hoo. Thank you, ma'am.
John D. Lorenzo, I just wanted to ask you about water. Where does the public water come from?
I believe the majority of it comes from Carter's Lake and the rivers.
Carter's Lake?
Comes from Carter, Carter County River and some from Eljay River.
Carter County River and Eljay River.
Carter and Eljay, yeah, because it doesn't come from Carter's Lake, because there's no water, it's not there.
That was wrong.
But, yeah, that's okay, but I've been thinking about water more and more, because, you know, well, Carter's Lake, that's Murray County's water source, and of course, you've got the new Jakes Landing thing going on, I just went down the road again, and now I'm not just developing on this side of the road, on the left side of the road, or starting on the, on the right-hand side of the road, it's getting bigger and bigger down there, and the impact of all those septic tanks on Carter's Lake is going to be detrimental. I know people with Chasworth, and I know they don't want to drink that stuff, but it's got to wash, it's got to really be a high impact on Carter's Lake, and I've been fishing there for about twenty-five years, it breaks my heart, it just breaks my heart every time I see that. I don't know what to do. I don't have an air force. I don't know what to do. But really, it's sad, because when you think of all the people downstream from there, what they're going to have to deal with, now, even the sewage plant in Eljay, believe it or not, they, I, I understand that pharmaceuticals, the solid waste is removed from the water, and the water is released back into the river, and it goes at Carter's Lake, all the drugs that people are using, the pharmaceutical drugs, they don't come away with the water, they just go into the lake, and that's a new thing that's happening now, and the fisher being exposed to it, and the people drinking the water being exposed to it. The sewage plants don't remove that, so it's something to think about, the water situation, because that's, that's what keeps people alive, is water, you know? And it's sad that, I mean, there was always a bubble of something on Carter's Lake, I know that's water under the bridge, so to speak, but it's a sad thing, if you ask me.
Yes, sir.
I think we've got to think more about the water sources.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if not. Resolution to adopt the 2021 and 22 annual update to the capital improvements, I don't know if Gilmore County and the cities of Eljay and East Eljay, that has been advertised, everything is in order, and I would make a motion that we approve the adoption of the annual update. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would, I would like to skip number eight for right now. That's, I don't really have anything to discuss on that until the next meeting. I did not get a list of the Georgia Bowerys ones yet. We know they're coming, but I still, I still don't have them, so I think, as one of your motives for the November meeting, maybe we'll have them at that point. Discussion possibilities on appointment of human resources director. I would make the motion, make the motion that Laurie Jones be appointed as the assistant human resources director going forward, and that Kathy Graham Boeberry would be appointed as the new human resources director.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The budget amendment, I think we really already dealt with, that was the water issue, so. Adoption of the first reader of use of speed to take consent of vice ordinance, I would make a motion that we adopt the first reader.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion possibilities on changing work session, regular meeting dates in November of 2021. I think the seventeenth and the eighteenth works for everybody, so it would be the seventeenth at nine, and the eighteenth at nine in this case. And I would so move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do need.
Okay. Okay. With action taken, then.
I make a motion that we move go into executive session with no action taken.
Second, ma'am? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, folks, we appreciate it.